Alright. Okay, so it is Monday, December 21st and I'm gonna call the this meeting of the North Academy School Board to order at 6:03 PM. The first thing that we need to do this evening is to approve the agenda, but first I need to do a board member roll call just to make sure that our video and audio are working. And I will do that for our for ex officio folks as well, just to make sure because they'll be presenting to us. So Ms. Colay, is your audio and video working okay? Alright, great. I'm gonna trust you on the audio.
It is, I'm here.
There we go. Uh, Member Schlesser, is your audio working okay?
Yep, we're good.
Great. Ms. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Schottler?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Ms. Hanson?
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Bodine?
I'm good.
Alright, Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Florzak?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Brent?
Working.
Alrighty, excellent. So the again, the first item we need to tackle is to approve the agenda, which you can see shared on your screen. I would entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a second for Chelsea's motion? Alright, thank you, Jeff. Any discussion or questions related to the agenda? Alright, when I call your name, just indicate your vote by saying yay or nay. Uh, Member Schlesser?
Yay.
Member Thielen?
Yay.
Member Hanson?
Yay.
Member Bodine?
Hey.
And Member Rapp?
Yay.
And Member Florzak?
Hey.
Alright, excellent. That motion carries unanimously. Uh, the next item uh is the approval of the last month's minutes, which is located in the agenda packet. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Um, Member Hanson, can I get a second for Hannah's motion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, Sarah, Sarah Bee just got. Alright, uh, we'll do the same roll call vote. Um, we, any questions about the minutes? Alright, Members Schlesser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Member Thielen?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Bodine?
Aye.
Member Rapp?
Aye.
And Member Florzak?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries unanimously as well. Uh, we've reached the community comment portion. Uh, I do believe that we have a handful of members in the community this evening. We have twenty-one participants and I only have about ten videos, so I'm guessing there's a few folks out there. Um, if you are a community member and you would like to say something, that would be the opportunity to do so. Um, we only have two action items on the agenda, so uh, community members, if you would either put in the chat box or if you would um, just use the raise hand function, I would happily recognize you so that you can speak to us. Alright, I am not seeing any reactions from the community. Give it one more second, in case someone's trying to figure out how to make it work. Alright, I see no requests for community comment. We'll move on from that section. Um, the next item we have is uh, under financial business is the finance committee report. So uh, treasurer.
Chris?
Yep.
I'm sorry, there wasn't no chat. I just, before we moved on, I wanted to catch you.
Oh, yep, sure. There is a uh, a request to read a letter that's been submitted. Um, I haven't checked my email in a couple hours. Do we know what we're talking about?
Yeah, this letter was submitted to at least Jamie and I, I'm not, and you and Chelsea, I believe. Uh, I was gonna save it for that portion of the discussion. It's under the COVID reopening discussion, so I do plan on making it known. I was just waiting until that portion of it.
Okay, that's uh, that's fine with me. Uh, Chelsea, is that okay with you?
That is fine with me.
Alright, we will wait for that portion. Uh, I believe it relates to uh, upper school teacher preference related to the date that we might come back uh, in relation to the uh, governor's orders. I haven't seen the final text, but uh, we'll just make sure that we speak to that under that item. Alright, thank you, Jeff, for noticing that right as uh, right, right at the, right at the gun there. Uh, so um, we'll move on to the finance committee report. Uh, Member Bodine, do you want to go ahead and walk us through uh, what you spoke about? I will put your committee minutes up on the screen here.
Sure can. So as usual, we met and there were some emailed questions just pertaining to uh, different items purchased with the check register and then um, the financial report, and so you can take a look at those. Um, and then for our discussion today, uh, one of the questions that we had was how long will we be paying on the middle school buyout? And that will be through January 2030. Uh, the PPP forgiveness is still being reviewed. Uh, Jan continues to work on that. Where are we for a mid-year review of the budget? Uh, Jan has been working on the budget. Uh, Osprey Wilds has requested all title funds be broken out, so it's gonna take her a little longer. I apologize for my dog or doorbell just ringing. Um, let's see, so uh, things to consider when we're discussing the budget. We had budgeted for six hundred and thirty students and we're currently at five hundred and fifty-seven excluding PSCE students and um, the insurance rates increased pretty substantially. Uh, the CSP grant funds uh, for round two will need to be spent between October 2020 and September 2021. Uh, we are still waiting on about a hundred and fifty Chromebooks that were ordered in August. If we don't receive those by December 31st, we will not be able to use the CARES funds to make that purchase. The Washington County grant funds were spent within the required timeframe. And then another question we had was whether or not the uh, new COVID relief bill that was just passed is gonna include any funding for schools? And none of us were aware of uh, what was actually in there for school provisions. So that was what we discussed today.
Cam, do you happen to know about the, that piece? I know there's more PPP funding. I was gonna actually follow up and ask if we were intending to seek any PPP funding, but I don't know what the funding mechanism for schools looks like.
Yeah, all I know about the school funding, it's super vague, is that eighty-two billion dollars was part of the package as a whole nationwide, so I don't think that's made its way down to the states yet or how that may be disseminated. But there was spending put in place for, for schools specifically.
Do you imagine, do you imagine that we would seek additional PPP funding?
Well, uh, I don't think we will receive additional PPP funding, but uh, MDE had made it known. There were a couple of funding sources that if money was coming from the ledge, from federal to the state that the schools would not see a change in funding, they would not see any pullback in funding or anything like that, but the state will change which bucket the funding's coming out of in order for the state to balance its budget uh, a little bit better. So if they receive federal funds, they're gonna supplant their state funds with the federal funds, so the state's able to balance their budget. That was made known to us, but it wouldn't affect the school funding in any way. We still receive all the money we've been slotted to receive. But there is a positive there in that any, any way that keeps the state budget balanced ultimately ends up being better for schools because when any sort of holdback comes into play, that's in the past, how the state has tended to balance their budget is off the back of educational spending.
I have one question about those Chromebooks. If we don't get them, we have to pay for them. It doesn't come out of the CARES money, correct?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, Scott, how that's gonna go because we have, I'm hoping they will give us some grace because we ordered it in August.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I feel so too, but.
Some of them are CSP, most of it's actually CSP money, and I think we're okay there because I think Beth Ann or Cam has already spoken to the people involved.
Yep.
Here's funny, I would just love to get coded, because I, I've already requested, they required me to go in and request all the money even if we hadn't spent it.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if it was gonna be two thousand bucks we now have to pay, you know, is that something worth talking about, or if you feel good with it and everything, and then I'm good with it. I just wanted to know what.
I think we'll be okay. It's just kind of frustrating that it's taking so long, but. And when Cam was talking about the holdback money, I did speak to um, Mike Pocarnich, who is um, an accountant that works with a company that handles our our building company, and he is quite pleased that they have not, they have basically told us there should be no extra holdback this year, which is kind of a miracle with all the money that's been spent for this COVID stuff. So we're real pleased with that, too. That's a positive.
Yeah, the other thing we learned from Mike is that he believes it'll be unlikely that there will be any per pupil increases the next two years as part of legislative session, that that'll remain stable, but it is possible holdback money will be increased in that session, but he doesn't, yeah, they don't think it'll happen now. In fact, the state showed a surplus for this year, so we should feel pretty good about that in the short term.
I feel like that's extremely fortunate.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Jan, do you, uh, just related to the, the upcoming um, budget revisions, do you think that we'll have a draft by January, or do you think with, this might be February?
Well, I'm hoping, Chris. I spent all day today and got the, the dental finished. That tells you how long this process takes. Um, I, I am working on it every day, seven days a week, so hopefully we'll get it. Um, but we're meeting a week early, too, so I have positive. But I will do my best, and the nine ninety will be available then as well. She promised she'd get it to us by the January meeting.
Whenever you get it done, please don't work seven days a week. I know you're going to anyways, but please don't do that.
I would like to get it done, too, because I've got another, I have a few more things on the list to get done after that, so.
Oh, we appreciate you. Okay, any other questions about financial reports or anything um, that we've discussed since that point?
Chris, I just wanted to point out what you have up on the screen is just a little different than what I actually have in the file at this point.
Did I copy it too early?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll replace it. I think I copied it at like four fifty-seven and I saw you made an edit at like four fifty-four. I'm like, that's probably safe. So clearly I was not.
Yeah, we had just finished.
Okay, I'll go back and update that. Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, with that said, then I would entertain a motion to approve the uh, finance committee report and the attached financial statements.
I'll make a motion to approve the finance committee report and attached statements.
Thank you, Hannah. Hannah, with a second? Alright, any further discussion? Alright, uh, Member Schlesser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Member Thielen?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Bodine? Member Rapp?
Aye.
And Member Florzak?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Uh, we'll go back to our next item, which is the um, the financial uh, I guess, what did I call it on the agenda? The um, look forward to remodel, revision, etc.?
Facilities update.
Facilities update, right, yeah. Do you want me to put your PowerPoint up now, Cam, or do you want to do that in a bit?
Well, that, that would work well. So while Chris is getting that up, I'll just share that my goal with this tonight is to give the board a little bit of background on where we've been, but also a look forward on what uh, lays in front of us. Uh, I think after tonight, it would be worthy of the board to discuss, though, uh, consider a separate work session meeting focused solely on facilities, so you can get, uh, so we can drill down a little bit more on some of the pieces of this, and you as a board member will feel comfortable with what we're trying to do and the why and, and everything behind it, but tonight's a little more of an overview and hopefully a little cause for some potential excitement as uh, we go through this. So uh, with that, Chris, if you wanna go to the next piece here, so little background, uh, what we're looking to do is upper, uh, remodel the upper school. Uh, that's our big goal. Our, we have two big goals, but this is our, our big one that will take some maneuvering and some variables in play. Uh, but the reason why we wanna do this is just frankly, that the building's really old. Um, there are some pieces of the building that will need to make improvements upon. Uh, if we don't consider a remodel, it just money will need to be spent regardless. Uh, and it starts to reach a, a threshold of at what point do you just redo the whole thing, right? The other big piece is just the efficiency of the building itself, how it's laid out and, and how it's used. All that to say, we do have adequate space. We have plenty of space for the students we serve. Uh, the teachers have what they need. I mean, it is running just fine, but there are a lot of places here where I think we can improve. Additional square footage will be a part of this as well. Uh, as board members, you may or may not know that the space above the admin area at the upper school is uh, not currently built out, and if that were built out, we know that that would fit somewhere along lines of about six classrooms. Um, and you'll see in a little bit what a floor plan looks like, but adding some square footage would allow us to uh, open up some opportunities. And then just think with uh, with the new K eight building, it's gonna come a point in time pretty quick here where families are gonna have this expectation of you know, you were in this brand new building, okay, and then we come to the upper school and it's just not quite at the same level, and we just think it's worth it to have that type of investment and have a K twelve facility upgrade all the way through. So that's kind of some of the background of the upper school remodel, why we're seeking it. So a brief timeline of events, and this may be some new information for you all to chew on. Uh, so today is the first landmark here, the board meeting where we're introducing this. What this will entail, and this part we're gonna go through either way, as I'll speak to in a moment, but in late uh, February, early March, we're gonna be looking to do a bond placement, which essentially means we're gonna refinance our current bonds that we have with the K eight building and then attempt to uh, bring in more bonds to do the upper school remodel, and that'll happen in late February, early March. Uh, so that's called a bond placement. Uh, if that goes the way we hope and anticipate that it will, that would mean that we would wanna begin construction and in the upper school in April. And that's a big deal, uh, because obviously that would affect classroom learning. Uh, that would mean that we would be shifting to distance learning for the remainder of the school year for the upper school. And it's, it's essentially a must in order to do a project of this size in the timeframe that we're looking to do it. The sooner we can start, the better. Um, and even more so in the construction world where summer work gets to be so busy and plentiful that if we can start early, we're gonna have more workers available. Uh, more uh, pieces of the project available to do things faster and really set us up for a, a positive conclusions. We're looking to complete this obviously by the start of the next school year. But that will be a, a big calendar change that is something to consider. So, big reason why we're doing this, right? Some financial goals behind this. In two thousand and eighteen, as part of building the K eight and getting the bonding for that project, we actually purchased the upper school. We had previously been leasing the upper school from uh, Bob McCullough. And we actually purchased the upper school with the contract for deed, which is still through him, but it's just set up in a different way. We're now, we're the owners, actually the ABC, the building company is the owner of the building. Uh, and we purchased it at six point two five million at a rate of five percent, uh, which really put us, uh, the reason it worked out so well is it did not change our monthly payment for the upper school at all. In fact, we designed the, the purchase, so it kept the monthly payment exactly the same, which in the long run saves us money because our lease had a two percent increase in it every year going forward, and then we also were able to get rid of property taxes because now we're the, we're the owner of a building, we're nonprofit. So in all, just by purchasing the building, instead of leasing it, we were able to shave off uh, an easy five hundred thousand dollars in the next five years, just knocking off that two percent increase and having the property taxes go away. Uh, we wanna refinance the current fourteen million dollar bond on the K eight campus. Uh, that's at seven point two five percent, and that's a, that's high. That is a high percent that we feel very strongly that we can get down to a much lower number, uh, which will obviously suit us well. We wanna bring in, we believe right now the upper school remodel is gonna be about six million dollars. Uh, so we'll need additional bonding for that. We want to fold in our current contract for deed, so if we're gonna do a bonding, let's bring everything, all the kind of debts that we owe under the same umbrella, under a single bond deal at a uh, lower interest rate than what these are currently slated at, and just give us a better overall product, and that way we're also only making one payment a month to one person instead of uh, what is right now three or four different payments. So the current contract for deed is six point two five million. Uh, we would pay off the middle school lease buyout as part of the K eight project, which as uh, I think Sarah alluded to, is a ten-year payment plan right now. Uh, we would just pay it off in full. Uh, and then we would also complete the remaining of the K eight building. There's about twenty percent of the building in the second floor that has not been completed. Those two aspects total about one point six million, and then with the cost of doing a bonding acquisition and the fees and soft costs and all those things that go with it. Uh, overall, this is about a thirty-two million dollar project that we're looking at. But a reminder that thirty-two million encompasses the current uh, middle school, or excuse me, K eight campus. The current purchase price for the upper school allows for a remodel of the upper school and pays off our um, middle school lease. So everything's brought into a single umbrella, and the, the hope there is that this is done at a, a percentage point that serves us well. So with any big uh, plan like this, or some risk, uh, there's always gonna be some risk involved. Uh, these are the three biggest pieces that I think the board needs to consider and really try and understand. The first is being able to close a deal on the open market. Um, that is just always something that until it happens, ends up being a risk. Uh, we have seen some comparable deals come through recently, which indicate a strong market happening. Uh, one in Woodbury just happened in the last month or so, that was about the same size project, and current rates for similar projects are running right now between four and a half uh, into the low fives, and just as a reminder, our fourteen million dollar deals at seven and a quarter. So that's a significant difference. Uh, enrollment is a risk factor here, so we need to grow. Um, and then that's true no matter what, right? But this does put an onus on needing to grow and get to capacity in the next three to five years. We certainly think we can do that. Even with what we have seen this year and the bump that it has been, we know that we had momentum towards that, and we think we can back that back up. Uh, we think a remodeled upper school was gonna help with that. Uh, and then the other biggest factor is completing construction, just we have to be done by the start of next fall. Any, any delay in that just causes more angst amongst our community, and uh, if we're looking to bring in at least a hundred and so more students next year than we have this year, we just wanna present a product to them that's ready to go and serviceable, and so any earlier start date that we can do uh, will exponentially increase that likelihood of, of getting that done on time. So there's some of the biggest risk factors involved. There's a bunch of variables, but those are the big ones. So I wanna show you a little bit about the floor plan. Uh, this is a really rough proposal. Um, so this isn't meant to draw questions at this point, like, you know, what will the music room sound like, or what will be in the art room, or the locker rooms, or so on. This is just a rough sketch, a wear placement of classes and admin area and things like that can look like. We'll start to drill down, uh, obviously as this takes a little more shape, but to give people some context, the pink at the bottom of the screen, the pink box at the bottom is where our current elevator middle entrance is. Um, that's the pink at the bottom. So the green portion in the upper right uh, where the staircase is, that will become our new main entrance. So a lot of you may know that as Mr. Saunders' room. So his room will become our main entrance off that corner of the building. Uh, and the goal is to make that entrance kind of look like it does at the K eight building. It'll go up to the second floor, to be open to the second floor. Um, similar to K eight, so that will be our main entrance. The red area next to it is the admin area. So as you can see right now, there's a, what, seven offices and a nurses area built in there currently, and again, this isn't a final product, which is an idea of what this space can and will look like. Uh, next to that will be actually a staff, it'll be a staff lounge area and potentially their small conference room or a maybe even half a computer lab. There's some space and, and decisions to be made there. Uh, but you can see how the first floor is laid out, but so on the left side of the screen where our current locker rooms and art room are, the art room will be converted into our cafeteria space. That's the blue at the top of the um, plan, and then that'll lead into our current FIAID area. So the purple spaces are a fitness room and then two locker rooms on that side, and the goal is that we'll be able to shut off that portion of the building for activities and events. Uh, we'll be able to, and people will be able to enter through the cafeteria on the back end of the building and enter into our activity space. Uh, and that part of the building will be shut off to the rest of the building whenever events happen. Uh, that pink space as well will be access to the second floor. Um, and then the yellow spaces on the bottom of the floor plan are our specialist areas, so our art, our music, uh, and our science rooms. And then if you look up at the second floor, really, this is just classrooms all around. Uh, the whole light blue are all just classrooms. Uh, and then in the middle of the kind of the hallway space will be special education or breakout spaces depending on uh, size and space needed. But uh, it's a pretty efficient space and outline here, and the goal is we will now be able to have fifteen classrooms the way this is configured right now. Uh, currently, I think we have twelve at the upper school classroom, so this will increase our total number of classrooms. Assuming the specialists already accounted for, for specialist rooms, they're already on the bottom, but this will give us a couple more classrooms and uh, just a much more efficient layout. So like I said, this is pretty rough outline of what a floor plan's shaping up to look like. Uh, and then along with this, and in fact, this is something that will or kind of needs to happen regardless. Uh, the K eight building, we need to finish off that space because we're growing and we need those classrooms. Uh, so as part of the growth model, we will uh, come, complete that portion in this summer. Uh, it'll cost probably somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand hours, maybe even less than that, depending on what type of uh, amenities and contingency pieces we bring back, but uh, this will include a fourth grade pod that needs to be built out. Uh, so three classrooms and a couple breakout spaces. It'll include more office and storage areas for uh, administration and special ed. It'll include two other classroom spaces uh, which we have dedicated right now, but um, it'll lead into a dedicated Becoming Learning Center. So the big space with the big windows you see as you drive in, that will be looking into our uh, Becoming Learning Center, which is like a media space for the students. Uh, so that will happen this summer, or needs to happen this summer for our growth. And then other considerations with that is millwork for the second floor classrooms. None of the current classrooms on the second floor have millwork in there, so uh, cabinetry and, and storage space. Uh, we're looking to bring a Sheridan stage into the gymnasium. Uh, Sheridan stage would be just like a Sheridan bed, a stage that actually folds down and folds up into the wall. Uh, acoustic panels in gymnasium to kind of deaden the noise in there. Uh, we're looking at some gutters on the front side of the building, fencing on the north side of the parking lot. Uh, a more prominent sign at the entrance, and then some potential land development at the front. Uh, if we're able to grub out some of those trees and flatten that space, we'd have a nice field to use, uh, and then some very smaller improvements along the way. So that's what that completion's looking to entail for the summer. And just give you a little sense of what this'll look like, the K eight site here. Uh, so the, I'm pointing at my screen, which does you no good. Uh, the fourth grade pod will be on the left side of your screen. Uh, that's a mirror image of the first grade pod below it on first floor. Uh, and then you see the Becoming Center at the bottom of the screen. Uh, those are the windows looking out over the, the front of the building. Uh, the two classrooms just to the right of that, the offices right in the middle, and then some storage, uh, which uh, is adjacent to the, the second floor of the gymnasium. So that's what that build out is looking to shape up as. So with all this, uh, there are some board actions to be considered that don't have to be considered tonight, uh, but coming up relatively soon, uh, we've been looking for approval. Frank, just approval for me to negotiate on the school's behalf when it comes to the bonding, the pricing, the construction and, and those pieces. Uh, this is very similar to how we approached the K eight project. At some point, we'll be asking for an approval of the funding amount that's being sought, and that will be going out to bonding. Like I said, that price tag is right now slated to be around uh, thirty-two million. And then approval for uh, distance learning, the calendar shift due to construction, assuming that uh, this all goes well. So those are some big pieces that I want the board to make sure they feel comfortable with, and if they have questions around, we have time to sort that out. So I know I, I just threw a lot at you. Uh, what questions pop up?
And board members, I, I anticipate that you took a moment to read that email that I, I sent um, a little more than a week ago, just trying to outline some of these processes. I think it's important for context, especially for our, our um, existing board, or, or, sorry, our new board members as well as a, people in our community. This is, uh, at minimum, uh, the refinance of the uh, K eight facility has been our goal since, uh, since day one. Um, just from a historical perspective, we went to market with bonds along with do you remember how many other schools, Cam? Fifteen or sixteen other schools?
Uh, it was around that. Uh, it was around that.
Yeah, something like that. Uh, the the fir- the first time when we were seeking funding and just because of the um, the timing and market interest, uh, it failed. And so we uh, we needed to uh, try again, uh, if we wanted to have a K facility and to kind of meet the promises that we made to a lot of families in our community. Um, and so uh, that is where um, our current financial situation and and obviously, as you can see for anybody who owns a home and has ever gone through mortgages, uh, we we paid a higher interest rate and uh, um, and we uh, we did not get to uh, kind of uh, enforce our will. In fact, we were the only successful school out of that group in order to be able to get bonds to build a, to build a facility the way that we wanted to. So our refinance uh, this year has has always been um, our intent. And in fact, like I said in my email, we trimmed about $300,000 from our budget um, from at the end of last year uh, to uh, to this year so that we could improve our financial situation as much as possible so that we would have the maximum flexibility when it came to um, came to this moment. So um, really what we're talking about here more than anything, while we have a different board and we can make our own decisions. If we uh, uh, want to refinance, that's obviously that's one key aspect. And if we want to continue uh, with the build out of the upper school, um, the way that Cam phrased it to me when I met with him about some of these actual figures that we would see in a work session is it costs a lot uh, to hire the professionals uh, to go to market. Uh, and so um, bundling these in in one large asks uh, makes makes sense because we don't have to try to go to market twice with all the variables that comes with what interest rates are we able to get, who's interested in funding, et cetera. So I don't know if Cam, you want to speak to that anymore, but um assuming these are all long-term goals that we have for our organization, doing it at the same time yields pretty obvious financial benefits.
Yeah, uh, like Chris said, uh, it'd be similar to uh, well, I don't have a good analogy, uh, doing a bond run as a whole. Uh, kind, it depends on the size of the project, but costs anywhere from about 700,000 to about 1.4 million. Um, that's just the cost of doing this. Uh, when you're talking about all the people involved, the underwriters and and putting together the plan and uh, all the pieces that go into it. So you don't want to do that twice if you can avoid it. Uh, so yeah, more more to Chris's point, we absolutely are going to do a bond uh, early this spring. Now, the question before the board is really is whether that's going to be for the K eight refinance and build out on on its own, or if it's going to be for that along with the remodel of the upper school. And that's where I think a work session on this stuff would be prudent to do so. So we could take a look at those numbers. You can see the options in front of you and and we'll make the best choice from there. But uh, going to, going to market in the spring absolutely is a goal of ours. It's almost a must for us to do so. Um, and we've been uh, grateful that our current bond holder is willing to allow us out of our deal to do that. Uh, she doesn't have to. We were signed on for 30 years with her and uh, she doesn't have to anything, but she's willing to do that. Obviously, she's looking to get compensated for that, but she's willing to let us sign this deal so we can get a uh, better rate for the school.
And Cam, can you just give uh, just for the board and for the public as well, can you just give us a quick rundown of the team that we have working with us? Because I think those names and people will come up and it might be easier for them to kind of navigate some of those some of those groups. So our construction company and our realty Realtor company and our uh, project manager, et cetera.
Yeah, so uh, some of this obviously is we're, we're looking to work with these groups because they served us well the first time through. This is part of the first board action to be considered is is we haven't technically signed on the bottom line with these people yet, and that will be part of the board action. But uh, Ku Vane has been our project manager from the beginning. Uh, his company is JB Vane. He's been the one that has been uh, most integral in getting us to this point. Uh, Roshan is our construction company that we used for K would intend to use for uh, the upper school as well. DSGW is our architect group. They're the ones that have put together the drawings you just saw. Uh, they do a, like I said, a more concise job when we get to that point of the project, but these are just rough sketches. Baird Financial Group will be the uh, project financer and underwriter we're looking to use. And then I'm trying to think of who else would be involved. We actually have a Realtor for this piece because we're not buying land. But that's, those are the main pieces of of what this project would undertake. There'll be some other entities along the way, but those are the big ones.
Uh, so board, this is what I spoke to in my email, but I think it's, again, it's important that we schedule a work session. Um, Cam, the admin's hope is by uh, by mid-January, I would prefer if possible before the January 11th meeting, that would be ideal if we could meet before that time. Uh, I certainly don't want to cut into your holiday uh, too much. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, well, we'll talk about this again towards the, towards the end of the meeting, but if you want to take a look at your calendars and and think about that week of the uh, of the fourth um, through that Saturday, which I think would be the ninth. Um, any of those days, uh, honestly would be would be suitable, um, if possible. That would be a a great opportunity for that work session. We've typically done those work sessions either on a weeknight or um, or on a Saturday morning, but uh, I I think we all need to be flexible in that as possible. But are there any other questions that you have at this, at this time?
I I will say if we come focused into that meeting, I I think we could keep it under an hour. If we'll get the information beforehand, and if you take a look, come in, focus for it. I think we can do that in under an hour for sure.
Any questions or or requests for clarification? I know there's a lot of information to digest, which is why I tried to uh, preview some of what we've talked about with our, with that email.
Possible to get it's a parent and family feedback on the possibility of going to distance learning there for that end of the school year in spring.
Well, I missed the first part of that question.
Um, I guess I was just wondering if it would be possible that we get some parent feedback on uh, what they would think about switching to distance learning in spring? That would be a pretty major shift in an already pretty disturbed year.
Yeah, so there's two ways to look at this. You're absolutely right. It's another major shift. Um, the lens that I've been looking at it through right now is the time needed to complete a project like this would mean, absolutely would mean a disruption to the school calendar on either one end or the other. Uh, when doing $6 million worth of construction in four months, that is such a tight timeline. Uh, they think they can make it, but but any week they can get on either end, they'll take in terms of of getting us there. Um, it doesn't really leave us a choice. If the, if remodeling the upper school is something we want to do and take action on, it's gonna be a disruption to the calendar. And and if we know that, then I would posit that uh, in a year where distance learning has already been done and we know we're in a mode that we can do it and and it's kind of, for lack of a better term, accepted this year, that this would be a better scenario than really at any other time. Um, because it keeps education going. It keeps our calendar in place. Students still graduate on time. Uh, but it's, yeah, it's done at a cost. There is going to be a sacrifice to this, no doubt, on one end or the other. Uh, if and when we're ever able to remodel the upper school, it's just too big a project to do in a timeline that doesn't involve the school calendar. So with that, I mean, we, we can always solicit feedback, but I just, I, we're a little bit stuck when it comes to i- if we move forward this, it is going to cause a disruption. There, there's just no way around that.
Jamie, do you have any thoughts on that from the upper school perspective?
Yeah, I mean, again, um, the, the rewards versus the sacrifices at at this point in time, as Cam was saying, you know, um, we are at a point with this building that we are not utilizing our space as efficiently as we can. Um, it's very challenging um, for retention purposes, um, knowing that the K through eight campus um, is around, um, and families get to see what that's about. And then when they do come to the upper school, um, many of them notice right away that it was once a business more than so a school and and how we're trying to basically do school in a business uh, building instead of having actually a created um, school that's actually meant for school. Um, so I I'm, I'm all for doing whatever we need to do to get the feedback for, so that the board feels confident that um, this is a a direction that families also want to go. Um, but again, um, with the year that we've already had and the different requests and asks that we've had, um, I do believe that distance learning is established right now for many of our students, even if we do come back for in person for nine weeks. Um, that's why it's important for us to come back so that we can start second semester really well, get them involved. Um, and then um, have April and maybe something kind of like a send off of what this year's school year has been like, so that we can come into something brand new, fresh and just super, something very exciting um, to to start the 2021 school year um, with excitement, with um, with validity of 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 having a building that is meant to be a school. Um, and um, giving us the space and efficiency that we need to do school better for our students and for our teachers. So um, like I said, we can for sure do that, that survey if the board feels that it's necessary and that it would be valuable input and feedback. Um, but um, I I'd really have a hard time parents saying, no, I don't want a new building or a, a gutted building to have um, a better product for our students to come into.
Any other questions from board members at this time? Again, I didn't, I didn't perceive this really as an action item at the moment. I think we have to give time to process uh, this information and we can come with more questions and more specifics at a work session. Okay, great. Um, thank you, Cam, for preparing the presentation. I think that was very uh, uh, concise, but also uh, but also thorough. So um, I think that that is a a great starting point for for these conversations. Um, all right, we will uh, move on to our next uh, item then. Which is, I believe, the uh, building reports. Yeah, I want to check to make sure. So uh, Mr. Brandt, it is, the floor is yours.
Okay, looking at enrollment, the K eight, uh, we had some positive movement up three from last uh, board meeting. So we're looking at total enrollment at K eight of 384. Uh, we are looking at likely enrolling between 10 and 15 new students uh, across K eight between the new year and the start of the semester. Uh, so we have seen some significant movement there. That's positive news. Uh, we did also survey our existing DLO families uh, to kind of survey their intention to return to in person. Um, as that's being offered, uh, as we look at the new year and the start of the second semester, most are choosing to remain in their existing learning model of distance learning. Um, I think right now it's sitting at about 25% or just under a quarter of families who are shifting to be coming back to in person instead of staying, but uh, we'll continue to monitor those because that impacts our ability to schedule. Uh, on academics, uh, since November 30th or post Thanksgiving, we've had 95% of our K eight sections attending in person or hybrid. Uh, so that was a a major improvement from the prior month, uh, looking more like September, in fact. Uh, we, when I wrote the report, we had no um, active positive cases with staffer students that shifted a little bit today, but not much. Uh, we had two students under quarantine as of last Friday. That was the fewest uh, since September. State accountability testing or MCA testing and a couple others, the state does not anticipate getting a waiver for that this year. So they are moving forward with plans to administer that. Um, including the possibility of remote testing. They haven't finally determined that, um, but it is a possibility. We have modified teacher evaluation plan for the year, just with uh, some of the unique obstacles. Um, and you know, roll that out to staff and that's in place. Uh, we have one incident of ISS in the last month and um, noticing that with the hybrid model of middle school, it continue continues to negatively impact turn in rates in course passing rates. So kind of monitoring our overall general student performance in the hybrid model. As far as financials, uh, not a whole lot to report on that this year. Uh, you can take it or this month, you can take a look at those bullet points uh, with the modified safe learning plan that the state released. If middle school would can consider coming fully in person, there may be some additional PPE that that needs to be purchased, but uh, nothing too grand. Ownership, uh, we reached out to our families who had previously been enrolled with us, uh, but dropped due to COVID uh, back in August or early September. Just that outreach alone generated 17 applications. Uh, so Miss Pack has been uh, busy following up on those as well as a few leads uh, that came directly from Enrollhand, which is the new marketing effort. I believe Mr. Stotler will for forth the report um, as far as what enroll hand is tracking with uh, metrics. PTO ran a fundraiser, um, butter braids to help fund future playground purchases. Those were distributed last week. And we are moving forward with a plan to hold parent information nights for prospective families to kind of build early applications for next year. As far as social, emotional, uh, I just shared a couple of graphics there just to give you a glimpse of what our seventh graders are learning in uh, the habits course and then what our K five group is looking at as far as top 20 curriculum. They're working on the frame, which is always interesting uh, to know that how we feel and what we get all starts with how we choose to look at our circumstances. So here ends the uh, K eight building report. Any questions out there?
All right, thank you, Mr. Brett. Uh, Ms. Gully?
Sure, thank you. Um, so as Mr. Stewart is pulling that up, um, we are, uh, that's where we are for enrollment. We're at about 187 right now. Um, there's been no changes in the 11th and 12th grade. There's been a few changes in the ninth grade, uh, 10th grade, we actually added one. Ninth through 12 students are still in the distance learning model through minimumly January 15th. Um, just so some feedback in regards to that, um, as far as data pieces. Um, we're at around 88% attendance for distance learning right now with our nine through 12. So um, going to distance learning in April and May, I wouldn't foresee that to be different or change. Um, students are attending what they're supposed to be attending. Um, and obviously 88% of them, um, so we know that they are coming to the Zoom live streams. Um, just as Mr. Brandt had said, um, turn in rates and things like that as far as coursework completion. Um, I'm constantly keeping an eye on from week to week, notifying families of anything that is of necessary for students to be concerned about as well as what they should be thinking about as we're coming to the end of first semester here. Um, first semester does end on January 22nd. Um, I'm currently creating the second semester schedule, which will still include the eight blocks that we are currently on with the four by four A B schedule. Um, we did get the NWA map testing results. Uh, Mr. Oguard put together a nice presentation um, since he is the data testing coordinator for the upper school. Um, and if you had a chance to look at that, you will find that our ninth and 10th grade students did fairly well um, on this report. And just a reminder that um, the map testing is, it's actually a computer adaptive test. Um, it allows a student that if they answer the question correctly, then the questions get more challenging. If the, the, the student answers incorrectly, then the um, questions get a little less challenging. Um, so that it basically keeps them at their skill level or their grade level um, without overwhelming them, but it's still giving um, the student as well as us um, a measure of what they know. Uh, and it really doesn't matter what grade level that they're in. Um, so this is something that we continually look at to make sure that the students are placed correctly. Um, possibly if there's any um, things that we need to look at in our curriculum, um, but for the most part, um, a a median RIT score and basically what a RIT score is, it's just the way that they measure it. It's, it's their, their measure that they use it in the map score. Um, for math, 230 is considered um, the average. Our ninth graders, we had 46 out of 57 students complete this. Um, some of them were in person and then some of them actually did this through DLO. Um, and our math tests were uh, uh, a, a medium of 236, which is above the rounded mean of what the map score actually has nationally. And then our 10th graders were at 243. So we, we are, our, our averages are above what the expectation is in math. And then for our reading, the RIT uh, score is usually 220 for the rounded mean. And our ninth grader scored a 226 and our 10th grader scored a 233. So again, we are in that growth. We are showing um, uh, significant advancements for our learning for our ninth and 10th graders at this point in time. And it was a really, it was really refreshing actually because we didn't know what we were coming into with having March, April and May off of last year. Um, but it really does show us that the students, um, I mean, obviously this is only one test and there's, there's many different ways to look at data and many different things we should be looking at. But for right now, um, they're showing growth and they're showing that they haven't really um, lost academics per se. Um, or their skill for what they're doing. So that's all. or their skill for what they're doing. So that's all positive feedback from the map testing results. And I thank Mr. O'Gard for putting, putting that together for us. I'm, I'm going to include the academic report here too, since it's in this report. Just so that the board, new and veteran members understand our GPA or our grade point average. We utilize the four point oh grade point average scale for anything that we do with our grades. You can see what it equates out to for each letter grade. And then just a reminder, anything above a C minus or higher earns credit towards graduation. And then any student in a college level or dual credit course, such as college in the schools or advanced placement or post-secondary enrollment option. They actually earn a point five bump towards their GPA at the end of the semester and or completion of the course. So their GPA will actually increase significantly with that point five bump because of the fact that they are actually taking college course credit, they're doing more work. And so they are rewarded that point five bump. There's an example there to help you understand what that bump means. This falls in line right with our policy number one zero seven, which is our dual of credit and PSEO enrollment, which outlines the reasons why we do this as well as the, the language for the point five bump as well. Um, we do have an honor roll. Students earning a three point or higher GPA with no Ds, Fs or NCs on their semester report cards earn his honor roll, earn an honor roll certificate. Those are usually given out after the two weeks of first semester and then towards, I think it's the last two weeks in June that they are given, they are mailed out. So there is incentive. Obviously, this is great for promoting the students, having it on their resumes, their portfolios. It works significantly well for scholarship applications and things like that. So it's an important piece that we still have something of this nature to be able to honor the students that are meeting this, this goal for themselves. Graduation honors, we have policy one oh two. We are looking to revamp this policy to equalize students who choose to stay on the N L campus and, and take N L A college level courses compared to PSEO students who earn more opportunities to increase their GPA due to the amount of classes they can take at a bumped level. So often PSEO students get to take way more college level credit courses if they choose the PSEO track. And so by just taking the sheer number or the amount of classes more than what can be offered at N L A, they're automatically ahead or above students at N L A who are choosing to stay on the campus and take the college level credits that we have here at N L A. So we are always looking at a way to equalize this opportunity for every student instead of just automatically having the PSEO students get out ahead. And so, you know, we're looking at a scholar opportunity. Mr. Rap had shared with me a laud opportunity, cum laude, kind of things like that. But this was actually something that Cam and I talked about a few years ago and have been in conversation with it. And then we actually had one of our senior students from last year's graduating class, the class of twenty twenty, approach me and give me a full presentation as to the reasons why equality is best when we're thinking about how to decide on graduation honors. So this is something that we will be taking a look at as we move forward. Nothing has been brought to the policy committee yet or anything like that. It's in conversation as to what those choices could be. And then our graduation standards, policy one oh one, that was just updated in October. The math, it, I don't know, Chris, did you update that a hundred percent because it was still in the edit mode?
It should be. I'll, I'll take a look and make sure that it, I know I updated the, the tracker. I'll have to make sure that the document itself, I feel like I did, but it's possible I didn't.
Um, so we looked at the math to try to figure out how we can best support our students. But also at the same time, keep our rigor and our, our expectations for meeting twenty-eight credits for graduation. And so we did make a change to the math credit. But with the expectation that students will still be in math for each year that they're at North Lakes Academy. So they will still be in a math class for years. Our graduation standards have not changed. We're still at twenty-eight credits. As you can see, Minnesota Department of Education requires twenty-one point five, which is why we call ourselves a college prep school because we are looking at the whole person with our liberal arts curriculum to be able to help students acquire the skills and knowledge that they need to be able to walk into the college or university with the requirements that they have met at North Lakes Academy to be a great candidate to pursue that higher education. And then anything with the policies as far as up, above or anything that deals with academics. It is discussed quite frequently between myself as well as with Mr. Stotler, the executive director. And then we also do have teacher committees, like the grading committee, that helps us make sure that we are following what we need to follow with our graduation standards and how to better prepare students with evidence of learning. And then anything that further comes from any of this, we go to the policy committee to continue to share and discuss. So that is the academic report inside the building report, upper building report. Financials, obviously Cam just went over the continued discussions for the upper school rebuild. We are looking at possibly, look, or we're looking at different forms of microphone speaker systems in the classrooms to help supplement students who are hard of hearing, especially now since the mandate or the requirement for teachers is to wear not only their face masks, but they also have to wear a shield when they teach now when we come back into the building, which is very challenging to hear for many students, but especially for our hard of hearing students. So we may have to figure out ways to help them hear us better so that they can learn along with their peers and do the best that they can. Ownership, student council brought back the weekly, which has been fun for the last few weeks is to get the student council engaged with the students and for the students to kind of see what's happening amongst N L A and to see their peers kind of act professionally, but fun. And to just really make that connection that N L A and our Husky Way is still happening. This past Thursday, December seventeenth, I attended Da Vinci's eighth grade school choice orientation. That was really, that's the first time that we've done that. And we had about fourteen families with their students that are interested in North Lakes Academy. And this is something I think we're going to continue to do from year to year. They actually have a few more orientations for their eighth grade class because Da Vinci does not have a high school. So they, their families are looking for school choice beyond just the big districts. So this was a great way. I was, I was with the families for about an hour and a half, just answering questions, giving them information and trying to help them make their decisions to come to North Lakes Academy. So I think that was a very successful night. And I look forward to doing a few more with them in the next few months. And then from that, I told Cam that I would like to sometime in the near future, try to come up with a commercial for ninth through twelfth grades to help promote our upper school and all of our offerings and what's unique about the upper school to help attract more families for coming to North Lakes Academy. And then our socially emotional, I just want to say congratulations to Jan. She just celebrated her twentieth year anniversary with North Lakes Academy. And it just, you know, I've been here for ten years and so that's half of her time that she's been here. And she's been just truly remarkable with all the transitions that North Lakes Academy has gone through. But then also too, just to be a colleague that has insight and direction to be able to depend on, to know how to keep us moving and running in the way that we need to. So thank you, Jan. And then on Monday, December fourteenth, we had a ninth grade Zoom meeting, which we invited all of the ninth graders to come to. It was conducted by myself as well as other ninth grade teachers. And it was just really to give them a pep talk and to help them remind or help remind them the benefits of the different habits that are important to keep on track, to keep moving, to have that mindset. Ninth graders usually need that type of communication piece at some point. Many times during the semester, so this is not abnormal that this happens. It was just abnormal that it happened as a Zoom. But we had quite a good participation from it. We only had about twelve students that didn't attend. So they, they all attended and they listened and they were, they had their cameras on and they were in tune. And, and it was very beneficial, I think, not only for the ninth grade teachers, but for the ninth grade students to hear that we care, that we want them to succeed and to help give them strategies and tips to, to keep them going. And then I'm just doing weekly or every two week types of check-ins with teachers via surveys tied to resilience, which is part of our professional development this year. So, any questions? Okay, therein lies the upper school report. Thank you.
And congratulations, Jan, again. I think we, I think we owe Jan a lot more than we give her credit for some days. So she has, she has been there from, since, since day one. So certainly always, it's never a bad time to recognize the person that, that keeps writing jokes. So, thanks, Jamie, for your report. Go ahead, Jan.
Just to clarify, I came the second year. I missed the first.
Oh, you did. Okay. All right. All right. You, you knew Jackie, but she recruited you, but, but you weren't in on the first year. All right. So we will move on then to our next item. And I believe the next item is Cam's executive director report. And then, Cam, you wanted to, are you going to talk about the marketing piece with the executive director report?
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, I'll just, I'll bounce back to that after you do your other update.
Yeah. So I will keep this really brief because there's a lot of other things to talk about. And most of this stuff comes up in the board meeting anyway. Within last month, there is a D E C meeting. There'll be a report to follow. I think it's one of the next agenda items. And the financial planning of the facilities has taken up a, a good chunk. I've started programming what extended time revenue will look like for North Lakes. This is a new funding source and program that we're instituting this year. As either Jamie or Andrew both alluded to, we've put out observations and evaluation for staff for this year. We did complete our first ever annual investor call as part of our bonding proceeds from last year. This is a, no matter facilities update or not, we would have had to do this as part of our current bonds with the K building. So that investor call happened last week. And then we were named Innovation Schools Innovation Award of the Month by MAX, Minnesota Association of Charter Schools. And with that was a video that they pushed out and we put on our Facebook page. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's worth going through. It speaks about our becoming program and how that originated and how it serves students. It's nice to be recognized for that. So we are the award winner for the month of December and that has been pushed out to all of the Minnesota charter schools. And then the learning plan adjustments, everything under the umbrella of COVID has taken up a bunch of the time. So that's basically what the last month has been around. But I did also want to point out every month, we get a marketing campaign update from enroll hand. And just to give you a sense of, you know, a fair question of what are they doing and is it working? The idea of this marketing campaign is, is a short-term awareness with a long-term design of keeping and attracting families that, as I spoke about a couple of months ago, that would be a good fit for our school and what we offer. And so I'm not going to go over all the data points there, but you can see there are significant numbers behind the number of engagements and impressions. The campaign right now is at a spot where it is putting out an infographic and a couple ads that they call, it's called A B marketing. So they put out two similar ads that have a little bit different phrasing to it to see which one gets more results, more impressions upon it. And then they'll cater future ads to follow in that same mold. So they use different word choices and, and different ideas behind that. And so as always, it's something we're building towards and something that's been in progress for a couple of months now. But as, as we've alluded to earlier, this has brought in some leads to the school and some applications for next year. We do anticipate that this whole ramp up come in to the spring season, but it's been going underway. And you can obviously see that there have been a lot of results because of it. So I will keep that, keep that going. We'll keep presenting it to you on a month by month basis. With that, here ends the executive director project report.
Have, Cam, have most of these, as most of the campaign, the, right at, at this moment been K eight oriented?
Not necessarily. No, I mean, so obviously the, just based on raw data, there's more grade levels and more students there. So a lot of the ad will, will have a lot of that in there. But there's certainly been some high school base and just district-wide philosophies and things that appeal to us as a, as a district. So it's been a smattering of, of just what everything.
Any questions, board members? Okay, we will keep moving on. And I believe the next item we have is the next item, the D E C report. Let me just double check that. Yeah, Director of Valuation Committee report. Okay, Joel is the chairperson of the D E C. He asked that I discuss briefly what we talked about in our meeting this past week. So we met on December fifteenth, so that was last Tuesday. The D E C committee is Joel, myself, Chelsea and Hannah. And just as a reminder, this, the purpose of this committee is primarily to allow Cam to set professional goals and to give him a subset of the school board to not just get feedback from, but also help him evaluate his progress as executive, executive director. But, and also to offer recommendations in terms of how we could adjust those goals. And that is the phase that we are at now. The notes that we took for our meeting is, is in blue there. And again, this, the function of this meeting was to adjust goals as we felt they were necessary. And I'll let you kind of read over those, but a couple of highlights is the extended school year program that he spoke to for academic goals. He also gave us some of the similar information about the marketing services and the success of those so far, among other things. He also mentioned a little bit about some of the meetings he has been attending specifically with trying to reconstitute the, the parent teacher organization. And then he also spoke to us briefly in terms of the monthly innovation award for MAX as well as the social emotional learning program that is ongoing at the K eight facility. So we did adjust, we did give him some feedback on those goals. And two other big topics that we spoke to at the D E C. The first was, how do we, as we continue to get larger, how do we make it more clear, not just to staff, but also to families regarding how do we communicate what Cam's role is? I think that there is a continued memory of Cam as a classroom teacher and as a, and as a building lead present in the classrooms regularly. But as we, as we continue to increase our enrollment into the upper six hundreds and larger, his job is going to continue to be less and less in classrooms in front of teachers. And the job, the duties of folks like Ms. Gouli and Mr. Brandt are going to get larger and more present within the building. And so that was a conversation we had at the D E C. And then we also talked about sending out a, an evaluation survey for Cam, which we expect to probably only send that to the administration team that composes his direct reports. Last year was a bit different, of course, because Cam was a building lead and executive director for a short period of time while we had three campuses. And we'll, we'll kind of talk a little bit more about that in future meetings. But that is your D E C update. Cam, anything you wanted to add from that?
No, I think that works.
Great. And just a reminder for the record, this is Cam's private financial data. And he has, in the, in the, for the sake of transparency, has asked that we continue to make this information public and so that it can be viewed. So he does not need to make this data public and he chooses to so that people know what he is up to and so that our, our, our dollars are going to good places. So with that said, that is the end of the D E C update. So the next item we have is the dissolution of the soccer cooperative. We set this item aside last month because our esteemed activities director was responsible for coaching and being activities director. And so he was not able to attend. And so he wanted the opportunity to discuss briefly what, what is being sought by the administration here. And this would be an action item by the school board in theory. So Jeff, why don't you go ahead? So Jeff, why don't you go ahead and take it away?
Hello, everyone. So this item really is, you know, I put some notes in here on this. Came apparent more and more this past season when talking with the Lila Activities Director as well. The roster over the last couple of seasons has grown more and more to be heavier on the Lila side, which is great, especially for them. About 60% this past year was Lila students, about 36% was N L A remaining with some homeschool students. From that, the varsity playing time went to about 80% Lila students. The remaining 20% was a mix of the homeschool students and N L A students. Looking forward to next year as well, Lila's program is going to continue to grow. They expect at least 16 to 20 players out, seven through 12 for soccer next year. We anticipate a slight growth. But if we remain in the co-op, that's not guaranteed. We haven't seen a ton of growth within the co-op program. So it just became obvious to both myself and the lady that might make sense for them now if we're going to continue the co-op to become hosts. For that to happen, though, we'd have to dissolve the current co-op in its current form. If we did dissolve that as a school, my goal would be to try to continue to do it on our own, knowing now that Lila has enough to operate a program on their own. Originally, was the goal is very beneficial to each other because we both were sitting in that, you know, seven, eight-girl range, nine-girl range. So we kind of needed each other. Lila needs us less now than we need them. We're looking at about nine girls and laywise, seven through 12 next year. The goal will be to try to retain the three homeschool students as well. So we need an additional like three to five girls to make a team on our own. If we're unable to do that, another option would be to look at another charter school in the area, another private school in the area to look at a co-op with that may be in the same position where we are. That doesn't have quite enough to make a varsity team on their own, but together we can make a team. The last option would be if we get to June and we are able to offer a team on our own, we can look to go back with Lila, but with them as the host. With having, knowing that they are going to be the larger of the two schools by far for the offering of the program. It would just make more sense for them to be the host administratively and financially. So that's kind of what put us in this position a little bit. Any questions on that? I know Lila is going to be, if they haven't already, will be voting on the same thing as well.
You expect that they will move forward with that, that this is in their interest?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this is more procedural than canceling soccer?
Correct. Yeah, like our goals to not cancel soccer, our goals to try to offer it on our own. But if we're unable to offer it on our own, it would be to shift the host school to Lila versus us.
Board, any questions for our activities director? I know there was some confusion last week about what exactly this meant, and I want to make sure that we get a chance to have those questions answered because I know that we had a couple of community members that wanted to speak to this matter. So this is a great opportunity to ask any clarifying questions you might have.
For Lila being the host school as opposed to being a part of the co-op, obviously, for them, it's beneficial to dissolve the co-op. But what does that mean for us if they were the host school?
It just means that they would have control over scheduling and everything as far as that goes. And our athletes would go over there to play with them, similar that we have. So as far as administrative, like, you know, soccer probably, if it doesn't break even, it'll lose probably anywhere from like $500 to $1,000 in the season. They would take upon that burden. They would obviously have to pay all the coaches staff at that point. So similar what we do with them for other sports is they would provide the athletes and or we'd provide the athletes to them now instead of them providing to us.
This might affect?
Not now. The other sports that we co-op with, like girls' basketball, it's, they are nowhere near where they're ready to offer on their own. And the lady and I have had conversations about now that they're in a conference, some of these sports are going to start to look and build upon their own ways to get their own sports ready to go within those programs. I know, like, girls' basketball, they're nowhere near. Baseball, we're getting close to back where we're both getting pretty healthy. Where it's potentially within a year or two, we could look at a split in that. But at that point, I think it'd be beneficial to both. You know, it's both schools. We're looking pretty good last spring, pre-COVID, for numbers. We'll see where they fall this spring now. Track and cross-country, there's just no need to at this point. It's with the way those sports operate, it helps both schools out to be able to have a larger number of kids for those programs. To be able to really help those athletes to succeed with what they want to do in those sports. And then softball, same, they have two or three girls out. It's, we'd be fine on our own without them, but we're happy to give them their kids that want to play the opportunity to play.
Member of the coaching staff, we really like the Lila girls. They are high-quality additions. Please don't lose them.
Yeah, it's, baseball is maybe the only sport down the line that I can see splitting.
Jeff, I just, I really want you to make clear because at the last meeting, I think there was concerns that soccer would be completely gone.
Yep. No, we would definitely have an offering for soccer, whether it be with us as the host, which our goal will be to do, or with Lila being the host, similarly, what we have done in the past with them is they would host the sport, and our kids would have an opportunity to go play there. And their idea is fully open to that as well. So we've had those conversations that, and I told her that we would try to do it on our own, but if we can't, they are more than happy to take us.
A really good way to summarize is the player experience really wouldn't change all that much. They're just wearing a different jersey and writing a different name on the back.
Yeah, if we form a co-op with them again, correct, it would just be a different name on the front. Yep.
Another thing regarding the player experience, a question for you. How about competitiveness? What do we gain or lose in competitiveness by this change?
Um, I mean competitiveness is never really truly our focus in our sports, as you know. But I mean, we definitely see it probably a drop in our overall competitiveness with the players that we lose. But our kids will gain a different experience in that they would get more of the varsity experience that they haven't gotten this year and in the future. So it's half of one and another few more of the other right there. So it's, our kids definitely are striving for a different opportunity based on how it's been going the last couple of seasons to be able to get on the field a little bit more in varsity competition.
Could we quote you on half of one and a few more on the other?
Absolutely. That's a Bymerism right there for you, man.
You tried. We'll give him a book of metaphors later.
Thanks. I appreciate it. You know.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Bymer. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're fully informed about, just to make sure that those offerings aren't going to be available in one form or another.
Yes, absolutely.
So with that, what he's asking us to do is to to approve the dissolution of the soccer cooperative. So I would open the floor for a motion to that effect.
I would like to move that we approve the dissolution of the girls' soccer cooperative with Lila at this time.
If you remember, can I get a second for my reps motion? Sarah seconded that. We didn't hear her voice, but I saw her mouth moving. Okay, any further questions before we cast your votes? All right, member Schlosser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Member Thielen?
Aye.
Member Bodine? Member Rep?
Aye.
Member Florzek?
Aye.
And member Hanson?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bymer offered as part of this item, although the second part is not an action item. He did want to give us just a brief update based on spring sports and winter sports related to what the high school league has discussed as long as he is here. So Jeff, you have the floor again. This isn't an agenda item. This is just a brief update.
Yep, just real quickly, as everyone most likely knows, the governor put a pause to all the youth sports and activities back in November. That has been extended to January 4th, and that is when our winter activities will be able to begin. So that'll be our start date for boys and girls' basketball. Traditionally, our start dates in a normal year would be in November. So we lost just under two months of the season this year. The end date got pushed back a little bit from what would be early, an early March end date possibly for section play to March 15th or March 22nd would be the start of section play this year. One of our big unknowns right now is we don't know when our first contest is going to be to the governor's order. He only approved the starter practices. We're still waiting on that. I know the state high school league is pushing for January 14th first contest as was with the plan that they approved back in November for, once the pause went through, what their plan would be once it gets going. Play number of contests, as right now is a little bit fluid as well with the current order, but the plan is for 18 contests, which is reduction from 26 normally. If the game, if the first contest gets pushed a little bit later, that number could be reduced a little bit. And then we are still waiting for updated COVID guidelines. We had the first batch of them for how we run contests and practices came out in November. We're anticipating some updates to those coming out here shortly. We have, like I said, we have a league meeting tomorrow to discuss how some of these things are going to go forward, and we'll find out more information tomorrow as well. Recommendation is going to be a start, once we start contests to go with no fans in attendance and just live stream the games, that'll give us a chance to get through and see how the setups will be for athletes in the gym without having fans in there to be able to maximize the space to set up properly. The original guidelines had set up for all bench areas need to be set, all seats need to be separated by six feet. Don't know if that's going to go down to three feet or not, like other guidelines, or if it'll still be at six feet. With the six feet, we need a little more space than our traditional bench would offer us. So we're looking to shift the benches to the bleacher side, which will result in us not even fans in attendance right away. The impact on spring sports is really, it's just a little bit later start date as of right now. Minnesota State High School really wants to try to have as much of a normal spring as possible for these spring athletes after they lost their entire season last year. So normally, a start date would have been somewhere around March 8th or 15th. This year, it's looking like a March 29th start date for all winter, spring, our spring activities with the first contest around April 8th. And then the section play would start about a week or two later as well, probably most likely either Memorial Week or the week after that. But they were, the consensus is made that they need all spring activities with state tournaments to wrap up by June 15th this year. So Father's Day weekend to allow for athletes to participate in summer programs. So part of that was they really don't want a reduction in contests, knowing that those sports lost all their contests last year. I did talk with one of our robotics coaches today. Robotics is planning on kicking off January 5th. She's going to be working through the winter break here to figure out what their guidelines are and how they're going to work through that. They're anticipating starting virtually and then possibly moving into the building at some point after that. So robotics will be going off as well this year. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Yep. So the next item we have on the agenda is the COVID update, N L A COVID-19 update. We, again, this is just a placeholder. This is not an action item. This is just a placeholder for pertinent updates. And if you're looking for this item, remember I explained to us last time that because we had so much information, I made a separate folder in the agenda packet specifically for that. So this is Cam's update that he, that he's provided. Cam, do you want to start talking through what the important pieces?
You want to go to the calendar first, the one next to it?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry, my.
Yeah. Okay. It's just a visual perspective of how the school year has gone thus far. So you can just kind of see what the years look like for us if one is not coming up at all.
I'm trying. I think it might just be the window. I'll open up another screen. Just keep talking about what you're.
The, the point of this is to show that at the elementary level, we have been in-person since day one. And though at different times throughout the school year, each grade level has had to pause into distance learning because of staffing issues around quarantine and positive cases. Those have been limited to no more than two weeks, and the rest of the year, every single grade level has remained in person. The middle school started the year in a hybrid model, and they have been able to continue that hybrid model with the exception of a seven or eight-day pause there in early November, where they had to go to distance learning, again, because of staffing. And then the upper school started in hybrid model as well. They had an early year pause for distance learning, and then, as you all know, we brought the ninth and 10th graders back for a week before we made the switch to full yellow, which is where they are at right now, and will be part of the ongoing discussion of when we can come back. So I just want to give you that visual of really what this year has looked like because it's probably seemed really segmented and at times really heavy and intense, and it has been. But through it all, we have really been able to maintain the vast majority of our original design of programming. Again, with the exception of distance learning at the upper school for this bulk of time. And frankly, that was the right move to make at that time because the teachers were able to adjust and put forth a better product, and the students were able to respond in the best way we could in the moment, as Jamie has said, 88% attendance through where we're at right now. It's not ideal, but it's still, we think, an effective quality product for what we're faced with. So this is where we have been. Now with that, last week, Governor Walz sent out and put out a update to the safe learning plan from M D E. And the big piece of it was the encouragement for districts to have their elementary students come back in person. Obviously, we've already been in-person. This doesn't affect us nearly as much, but there are some facets that do affect us. So what I wanted to do with this document that Chris has up right now is just work through four or five issues that are presented through the safe learning plan in updates and really what it means for North Lakes. And so I won't read through all of this, but I'll outline a lot of this. So the first issue that was discussed and a lot of districts had questions about was the idea of a rolling start for coming back to in-person learning. And so again, this doesn't affect our elementary because we're already in-person. And actually, this doesn't affect any of our grade levels in the way the learning plan has been presented because we made this known prior to December 16th that our goal was to come back and adjust our learning model in January. That has always been our goal. The community has known about it, and because we had communicated that out, we actually don't have to worry about what a rolling start entails. And really, what a rolling start is, is only allowing three grade levels to come back in person at a time while the remaining grade levels had to go to distance learning and have to phase in that in-person modeling. But it really doesn't affect North Lakes in any way, shape, or form as we move forward. But that was a big consideration made by the governor. The next one, Chris, you want to scroll down just a little bit, is hard for me to read that color. Sorry for those of you who probably can't read it either.
And I'm old. Face masks and shields.
Thank you. Yes, face mask and shield. So this is one that does affect North Lakes. So every single school employee, and this is statewide, school employee that will be teaching either hybrid or in-person learning will be expected to wear both a face mask and a shield at the same time. There are limited exceptions for teachers who are working with perhaps students who are deaf or hard of hearing and need to see lip movement. There are exceptions for those who have doctor's notes for specific reasons on why they may not be able to wear a face mask and such. Those are still in play, but every other member is expected to wear a face mask and a shield at the same time. These items are going to be provided by M D E. Shipments should be coming prior to January 18th, and January 18th is the day that this will be put into effect. We know there will be a difficulty from this in terms of just hearing. It's difficult right now to hear as well with masks. And if you put an added layer of a shield to that, that's part of the problem solving that Jamie spoke to in her report. We might need to find ways to make sure that's not an issue for students. But it is one that we're expected to comply with, and we will do our part in complying with that through M D E. The next one, yeah.
Do we have? Do we have, uh, do we have any idea of when we might? Know what products are going to provide to teachers just from a teacher perspective personally? I know that a lot of teachers are going to have certain preferences and, and what type of product they're going to wear. Is there any standard regarding that or?
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen a, a state issued shield. Um, the masks will, but I'm sure they're the same that they sent out prior to the year. Um, but I haven't seen what a state issue looks like.
The MDH, um, commissioner, when she was on, um, the day after. Wall spoke, she said it has to be a shield that comes below the chin.
Yes.
That, that's the minimum recommendation that she gave from there on and they, they said absolutely no goggles. Um, goggles are not a suitable replacement for a shield. It has to be a shield that comes below the chin.
Yeah, uh, I was on a call today at four PM where. Uh, MDE and MDH went over a bunch of questions that had come in from districts after this announcement. And a gentleman on there spoke for at length about why shields are being recommended. It had a lot, the analogy or the example used was with the meatpacking plants. And why at the beginning of, of COVID, there were such large issues in the meatpacking plants and since they. Put a shield mandate on there, you haven't heard of any issues since then. They also. Said, you know, this is what healthcare workers use as well. It's just the best form of preventing. Spread especially from adults to adults, which is frankly been the biggest issue within schools, uh, in the state. So. Uh, this is one that we're going to have to adjust to and follow along if we want to be in person. So we will, we'll make that adjustment. Uh, the next one had to do with specialist classes and lunch. This is particularly at the elementary level. Uh, the initial, the safe learning plan was adjusted to say that specialist classes like art or art explorations class. Um, and lunchtime and Fayed would have to be done in classrooms. Uh, they have now amended that and they amended that today to say if you are able to maintain six feet of distance and. Have the appropriate, uh, pieces in place, you are then able, for us, the big one is having lunch in our cafeteria. It just made so much more sense the way we have it set up. Excuse me, to have students having lunch there than within their classroom. So we are able to keep that in place. Similarly. Fayed can remain in the gymnasium, but students do have to be masked during the. Uh, classes and our, our classes can continue to go into the classroom instead of having the teacher go into the. The grade level classroom. So this really doesn't change much for North Lakes at this time. I just, you know, on the document, the stuff in yellow, that's highlighted from the safe learning plan itself, uh, pieces that are pertinent to the school. Um, just to show where, where this, these statements are coming from. Uh, and then the last one here is a transition time for staff. Uh, so at the beginning of the year, we spoke about how MDE gave districts five days. Throughout the year where if you're moving from one learning model to another, you can use as planning days when originally they were instructional days for students. Uh, this one does affect us, uh, for upper and middle school. Uh, because upper and middle have not been in-person learning at any point throughout the year. They've both been hybrid. If and when we make a move to in-person learning, then two staff transition days must be used to prepare for student arrival. Uh, these two days would consist of staff planning. Uh, obviously adjusting what their schedule may look like or the length of classes and how to adjust their lesson plans for that. It will also be spent on building preparation, uh, bringing students back in will mean, will need to change a setup of some classrooms and, and throughout the school. And just some of the logistical operations, right? What changes throughout the school day, whether it's, uh, passing time scenarios or. Uh, lunchtime or things like that. So we do have a pretty good sense of. What this will look like, but there, there will be two days as a part of any calendar planning for bringing students back in to the school. Um, sorry, good night, honey. And then, uh, well, it wasn't, I'm sorry. The last one is.
Can I ask a clarifying question there? Um, so for example, the, uh, the, the. As far as I'm aware, the, the plan at nine twelve is to bring nine, ten back. Um, uh, as it was prior, uh, and then leave eleven, twelve. Hybrid as we kind of roll in, is that still the plan? And, and does that constitute bringing people back in person? Like, would there be a, a two-day? Adjustment prior or only if we bring all four grids back in person? Maybe that's a Jamie question.
Yeah, well, that it'll actually come further than this document. So let's pause on that. It'll, it'll come at the bottom here. Um, but it'll be answered. Uh, the next, the last issue, I'm sorry, is staff testing for COVID nineteen. Uh, so MDE is proposing and making available COVID nineteen testing, saliva testing. For all school staff. So this is not just teachers, but it's administrative support, lunchroom support, paraprofessionals. Uh, anyone who's associated or as an employee of the school. Is allowed to take a test bi-weekly every two weeks. You are not obligated. It is optional. Uh, but it is recommended. The goal of this is to isolate anyone who has asymptomatic. Um, uh, response to COVID nineteen and to isolate that person to prevent spread. Throughout the building. So every two weeks and it'll be on an assigned day. We haven't received that assigned day yet, but it, it, they'll say like on Tuesday. And then two weeks later on Tuesday, all staff will be eligible to do the, um, saliva test. For those of you that have done it before, it's. Not difficult to do. You literally spit into a tube. Um, that's all it takes, but you do have to go thirty minutes of no eating or drinking or. Uh, chewing gum or anything like that prior to the test. So that'll be an adjustment, but that'll be available every two weeks. Uh, and MDE is providing all the materials for that. Sherri Jensen is our COVID coordinator. She will be the one. Uh, in charge of that, but we'll, we have a couple of people at the upper school that are available to do it there too. So we'll make sure that that's covered as well. That's a positive, um, step, I think, for, for everyone there. Uh, so that brings us to, uh, considerations for the board. And this isn't meant to be something that's decided today. Uh, we have always, uh, in the last month, we said that January eleventh. Uh, would be the day that we'd look at solidifying these plans, but it is worthy to put in front of you and put in front of our families. As things to consider or think about prior to that January board meeting. We know a lot of data can change. Uh, between now and then, but here's where we're at right now. At the elementary level, we're looking to continue in-person learning, no model changes. Uh, it's going well. We're going to keep trying to have that go well. Uh, again, we'll adjust if needed based on staffing and how that's impacted within the classroom. The middle school at this point are looking to remain in hybrid. Uh, and this is the best consideration due to the spacing within the building. Uh, and just that the volume of students, if we were to go to in-person, the volume of students within that space. Would present, uh, difficulty in maintaining even a, a. Three foot social distance and, and the spacing within the classroom. We also are doing a pretty effective, pretty effective job instructing in the DLO model. The staff has time to prep. Uh, that would be a big adjustment. It is something we're looking at. What would in-person look like? But as of right now, we feel that hybrid, uh, the hybrid model remains the best consideration for middle school. Some might also do with, with scheduling and then just the potential strain on staffing. If we have a couple of staff members that. Do need to quarantine or test positive, uh, that would necessitate a full shift to distance learning. We wouldn't be able to do the hybrid model. And so the potential for that large change and all the other factors considered right now, we feel that hybrid remains the best. Model to stay at for middle school. Uh, and then upper school. Uh, I have two scenarios laid out in front of you here. The goal is to, we, we think we have the capacity. We think we have the space. And the availability to bring all students back. Um, and we think the data within the school model supports that. We think the, uh, level of. Positive cases or lack of positive cases between the staff and students. Uh, really does present a strong argument for having all nine through twelve. Students who choose to be in person. There are still a significant number who are choosing distance learning. To have them come back. So then the question becomes when? Uh, so there are two scenarios here. Uh, one is to use those two mandated days by MDE. Uh, to have those be on Monday, January twenty-fifth and Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, so the start of second semester. Uh, the Monday, Tuesday of the start of second semester will be planning instructional days and then in-person learning beginning on the twenty-seventh. Uh, then the second scenario is to return a little bit earlier in that, uh, have Thursday, the fourteenth and Friday, the fifteenth. Be the instructional planning days and then Tuesday, January nineteenth, begin in-person learning. For all students. Uh, Monday, the eighteenth is Martin Luther King Day. Uh, that's a non-school day. So those are the two scenarios that we'd like to propose. To the board for consideration. Again, this, I don't think this is an action item for tonight. It's an update, but certainly worthy of discussion and to give our community a sense of. Of what to expect. And this is where I will reference, uh, earlier today, uh, an upper school teacher. Uh, presented Jamie and I and Chris and Chelsea with an email. Uh, stating a number of reasons why there is support from. Uh, it was twelve or thirteen teachers. I didn't count all the names, uh, uh, somewhere around there. Uh, number of teachers why they are favoring a return after the semester. Um, there were a number of super valid reasons when it comes to planning, uh, transition time for students, adjustments for students. And, and some pieces behind that. And they also made that known last month too. That's not a new aspect. Uh, one of the reasons I have been and, and I do continue to be, but I do understand. The reasons in play, but, uh, with the idea of construction. That might occur in April and hopefully can occur in April. Uh, my personal feeling on this is every week that we can have students in person is beneficial. Um, and I know that comes at a cost, but it, it, I think it's beneficial if we're looking to ultimately. End the in-person learning school year in April, um, whether it's beginning or middle of April. I, I am of the, the philosophy, let's get them in person as much as possible, but I absolutely. Believe and, and know that there are pros and cons to either one of these scenarios. But I just wanted to put that out there and, and I have no problem answering questions.
Jamie, you want to speak to any, uh, of this regarding the considerations you've had before you, for questions are asked if there are any?
Yeah. So I mean, I just echo what Cam said. There's pros and cons to, um, when this start date is going to be when we come back. Um, but, um, I, I am firmly with the fact that the, the more that we can get the students back in. Especially if we are going to go to distance learning, even if it is four days. Um, I think that it's, it's important to get them in the building, get them adjusted, acclimated again. I know that last week of school, uh, that last week in, in January is right, um. The last week of returning possibly, um, that is the last week of the semester, um, which poses transition. Scenarios and situations and concerns, um, that the teachers did write about and, um, I completely hear and understand. Um, but, uh, we, again, uh, every day that we can get them in person, I think the better off it is going to be. Um, to help them, um, do what they need to do in school and that includes the teachers too, as far as. Um, making sure that they're ready to go and, and having that time to, um, reconnect with students. Um, so. Uh, it, it's a matter of, uh. What the board feels would be appropriate as well. Um, and, um, obviously the teachers have spoken, um, frequently to this. Um, and have very solid feedback in regards to where their positions stand and I support their positions as well. Um, so it's just a matter of what's the goal and what are we trying to do, um, with the information that we have and what the plans are coming for April and May, hopefully.
And so your expect, your expectation is that you hope to make a, a decision in. January, not, obviously not, uh, this evening, you intend to make a, a decision on what your expectations are in January?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't plan on making, I mean, because like Cam said, there's a lot of information that could happen between now and January. Um, so I think that it's, it's appropriate to wait. Um, we always had January fifteenth as kind of that timestamp. Um, to be able to have enough time to be able to communicate to the community, to the community as far as what the plans are. Um, but, um, just to reiterate the fact that our, our plan has always been to return to in-person of some sort as quickly as possible. So.
Yeah, I, I guess just as an upper school teacher, my, uh, and I'm sure this is, uh, likely in the, in the letter. I'll make sure that, um. Uh, after I read through it, I'll make sure that the board is able to, to view that as well. Um, I, uh, I guess the biggest consideration for me is just, uh, the amount of change that would be asked of students, uh, in that moment. If we do bring them back that week before second semester, um, being asked to not just. Shift back to full eight-minute schedules and to kind of relearn the building and, and relearn the new, uh, restrictions, expectations. Um, and then in four days be shifted to an entirely different, um, not entirely different, still a block schedule, but, uh, entirely different classes. That's, for me, that's the biggest concern, especially I suppose for special education students. That's, um, that's, uh. I imagine to be a, a pretty substantial challenge. So I don't know, Chelsea, if you have thoughts about that you want to share as the other upper school teacher.
Um, I know that there was, I know they had talked about, my one concern is that, that they had wanted the letter. Read, um, that, that they were going to speak, so they were going to speak to the letter. I, is it possible to? Read that, Stu, or is that something that could be distributed and addressed before that decision is made?
Yeah, I think if, if, I think if the intention is to, is to hold judgment until the eleventh, uh, the meeting of the eleventh, that can be our expectation and. Certainly I would, uh, um, make sure that the board members get a chance to read that. I think reading. I think the reading the letter word for word in open minutes is probably is not. Um, especially if board members haven't seen it yet. I think we should give board members an opportunity to read it first.
Okay, so that should be put in the agenda packet for January.
Yeah, and I'll, and I mean, we can, one of us can forward it on to the rest of the board this evening, so we have a chance to read it.
I'll take care of that.
Uh, other, uh, other board members, what thoughts, considerations do we have regarding these pieces? Okay, Cam, anything else you want to add before we?
I guess I'll just briefly speak to the idea, uh, um, I, I do not wish to get into any sort of back and forth and I also don't. Uh, this isn't a hill to die on for me, though I do feel. I do have an opinion on this that's based on the big picture of what I know and all that entails, but the idea of the transition for students. Um, I just said, I, I don't think. A transition is as big of a request as it, it sounds like. Um, our students are going to four classes a day. They know the building. They've been in the building. Um, the majority of classes from first semester to second semester are the same. Uh, most of our classes are year-long. Uh, so they're not necessarily changing. It's a different schedule, yes, but that's something we do every year at semester. Um, I get the piece, the biggest pieces I see are what it means for the staff to plan, especially during the end of first semester. What that can entail. Uh, but I also just, I, I try to look at it from the lens of the families who have had their students in distance learning for. A number of weeks and might not have that in-person opportunity at the end of the year as well. And that's, that's my biggest consideration in, in looking at why an earlier start date is preferred. But again, uh, this is one of those where we talked as a board where whose role is this and whose decision is this to make? Uh, this is where I value the board's opinion and, and, I guess not a hill to die on, but it is something that. I want to make sure we at least discuss and talk through and, and have our reasons for whatever decision it might be. Um, so again, which is why I think January eleventh is the appropriate time to, to look into that, but I did want to put this in front of everyone.
And, uh, board members will make sure that you get a chance to, to review those teacher concerns before you. Um, offer any specific feedback and we don't have to wait until our meeting is being recorded to offer feedback. Um, if you have thoughts and you want to submit those to our administration, especially after you get a chance to. Uh, take into consideration some of the teacher concerns, you can reach out to Cam and Jamie, uh, at your leisure, uh, whenever you would like. So, um, feel free to, uh, to do that, um, as you, as you feel it's necessary. All right, um, we will, uh, keep, uh, moving forward. Um. Sorry, I lost my agenda, uh, now because I had to switch to another, um, uh, switch to another, uh, window. So just be one quick second. Make sure I'm not missing anything. Right, um. So, uh, the, uh, the other piece, um, uh, that we have is the Minnesota Association of Charter Schools application. Um, I asked you last month, uh, what you thought about, uh, participating in, um. Considering, uh, Max as a, as an option, uh, regarding our, um. Uh, as an organization that kind of, um, supports the legislative efforts of charter schools. Um, I, I heard from one member, uh, so I'm not asking for, uh, an, an action item unless someone, uh, feels like it's necessary. I did hear from one board member over email that I, um, and I agree, I think is at the appropriate time to look at this. Um, yeah, again, as a group is, is when the, the next time that we revise a budget, um, not, not revise a budget, but rather, um. Uh, write a new budget for the, for the next school year. Um, that's the, the best time to consider new financial kind of, um, obligations. Keeping in mind, of course, that that the support of organizations like this that do support us is part of the cost benefit analysis. This is before we received their innovation award, which I thought was kind of a an interesting aspect to this. I I felt a little bit guilty, but again, that is that is not a mandate that we need to do anything as a board specifically, but just a consideration for the future. So I I'll kind of open, I'll open up the floor if board members have specific thoughts that they did not get an opportunity to share. But we can move on if no one else has thoughts. All right, moving forward. So we'll we'll plan on taking a look at that in the summertime when we were making considerations for a for a new, a new budget. So I I did want to briefly touch on the board self-evaluation. All of you received a a document from me, shared, a shared email. I didn't send a separate email to explain. But what we typically do at the end of the calendar year is we take a moment to evaluate our own performance as a board and to try to set some goals for the next calendar year regarding professional developments and areas of concern as a board. I think that this is going to be a particularly enlightening opportunity for us this year because we have five newly elected board members. Some of you have served in the past, and so you know about board business, but for many folks, this is a, this is very new. And so a couple of, about four or five years ago, I did some research on school board evaluations. And I came up with this system where we can kind of evaluate our our proficiency in six different dimensions. So obviously, I'll give you time to read this, but this on the document you create. This is the one key. The one key that I would like you to complete is your total scores here, and then I will be able to crunch the data. The data will be anonymous. I will not tie you to your scores. As Ms. Thielen and Mr. Rapp and Mr. Florzak all know, sometimes we are easy graders on ourselves, and sometimes we are tough graders on ourselves. And so it is, it doesn't matter how you go about grading. It's all relative, and we kind of averages out to look for dimensions of concern regardless of your personal grading strategy. Obviously, Scott, you would know a lot about that as well. And so, but the questions that you're being asked are in each dimension, and there's ten questions per dimension. So this will probably take you about forty minutes to complete. And if you would just mark up these documents and then tally up your score for each dimension just by summing the your total point value of your four responses and then put them in this cover sheet, I will be able to take the data from there and offer some visual representations regarding what areas we need to consider writing goals in. And then that is an opportunity for us in February and March is to consider new goals for self-improvement for the board after spring elections. So any questions about that? You should have that document in your drive. Feel free to reach out to me, but this is, I think, an important piece to evaluate ourselves.
Yeah, I got a, this is kind of a dumb math teacher question, but a couple of those questions have not applicable as an option.
Yes.
That if that's the case, how do you want us to do the scoring on it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So typically, what I do is in my chart where I have kind of the averages, if anybody chose any not applicables, I just deleted those from the from the denominator.
Okay, all right. So we don't have to do anything different.
You can do it for me if you want to, being at being at your math teacher, for our math teacher, I suppose. But if not, you can leave it. I scan through every document to see if anybody used any not applicables.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, that is not an action item. That was just a reminder to please tackle those pieces. And then there's the last two items that we can speak to again, are not action items, but as we as we discussed, we wanted to set a new work session date for early January, if possible. So if you have paper calendars nearby you and you need to take a look at a particular date, what I would like to consider again is that is that first week of January that school is back. Again, we're looking for an hour, maybe two, either in evening or on a Saturday morning. And I'm going to open up my calendar as well. So is there any, anyone who knows for certain, this is the the fourth through the ninth? Is there anyone who knows for certain they have a a date which they are cannot be available? Or is there a preference for a weeknight versus a Saturday morning?
I can't do any weeknights.
No weeknights that week?
I would prefer the weekend as well.
Okay, could we do a Saturday morning, the ninth at nine A M?
Yep. Feel for me, but I will try to work it out.
Would a different time of day on that Saturday work better, Jeff, or?
Yes, late afternoon or evening would work very well.
Okay, does anybody have any issues with that? If we did a four P M, so it could be done by dinner? Four P M, January ninth for a work session.
Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be the same Zoom link, and we will send out an agenda. Technically, those work sessions, of of course, they are open to the public. The public typically does not come, but they are more than welcome to if they want to hear more about this process. And so there won't be as many formal items, but the action items those day, that day would be to to consider authorizing Cam to negotiate financial terms for a bonding offer. That is kind of our our hope. And then Cam will also provide us with supplementary information regarding the specifics of the financial ask. All right, great. And then
Sorry, Chris, just to be clear. At this time of adding to that, anything regarding learning model changes? Or would we specifically be just looking at this one issue?
Yeah, I I think that we need to resist adding other types of issues. We'll be meeting again as a board in two days after that. So I think it's important that we we don't address anything not related. Sorry, that was a weird sentence. I think it's important that we address only items related to the to the refinance.
Thank you. Agreed. I just thought it might be helpful for the public to know that.
I agree. I agree. And then as another reminder, this is has been on the calendar and been in minutes. But we will be meeting a regularly scheduled board meeting will be January eleventh, Monday evening, because the eighteenth is a federal holiday, so we will not have school and we don't want to do board meetings on those days. Okay, so on the agenda for the meeting of the eleventh, a couple of items, Jan does expect to have the nine ninety ready by that date. If that changes, of course, Jan, let me know. We possibly will have the revised budget, but no pressure, Jan. Please, again, don't work seven days a week. If you need until February, that's going to be fine. Just let us know. And then we will look at the data for the board self-evaluation. We will have reports from our athletic director and our technology director. And then we have a the formal announcement of the dates for the election as well as a call for candidates. And so the election committee will will likely need to meet before that meeting so that we can go through that process. And so I'll make sure to reach out to the election committee in the next few days here to to ensure that they have the resources they need to to meet together so they can take a look at some of those dates. Cam or Jamie or Andrew or anyone else? Are there other items that we know will be on the agenda for the January eleventh meeting? The standard placeholder, of course, for the covid learning plan, so board, please make sure to have had your to process your feedback and to reach out to the appropriate administrative officials when when you feel like you need to. As always, we want to make sure that this is not we're not having any surprise attacks that we have these conversations when we need to, as we need to, and not to wait until the day of the decision to 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 voice our opinions, so. Okay, that is it for the agenda for this meeting. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight oh two.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight oh two.
Thank you, Ms. Thielen. Can I get a second for Chelsea's motion?
About a second.
Thank you, Forrest. Any discussion before we adjourn? All right, members, Schlosser, how do you vote on the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Member Thielen?
Aye.
Member Bodine?
Aye.
Member Rapp?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
And member Florzak?
Aye.
All right, the meeting of the N L A School Board is adjourned. I thank you all very much for your attention this evening, and we'll see you on the ninth. Have a happy holiday.
You too.
Take care, everyone.